And that one, not presenter.
Well presenter.
Okay. No, I can. Welcome. I would like to call, so I look to administration and my fellow colleagues to see if there's any changes or emissions to the agenda. None? None? Okay. I move that we accept the, approve the agenda. So, all in favor? Opposed? I see none, so carried unanimously. Moving on to the next meeting. It is approval, no, we approved the agenda. Moving on to our delegations, which is Mr. Joseph Potts for the Bow Valley SPCA Annual Update. Mr. Potts?
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm here with the Bow Valley SPCA. I think you should have gotten a bigger document than the one I'm going to talk about today. Okay, good. Okay, sorry. Town of Canmore and the council for your past support of the SPCA. And I say that on behalf of the board, the staff, volunteers, and the dogs and cats that we save and rehome. So, and I think you should have a document that has a lot more detail than what I'm going to talk about today, adopted. So, over 11 years, it roughly averages about 150 animals a year, about twice as many cats as dogs. Somebody asked the other day, why more cats than dogs? I don't know. And, and we have, our space is set up so we can hold about 30 cats without them being crowded, and we can hold about 10 dogs. So, we built it with the idea that we could handle more cats than dogs, and we do. And most shelters are similar, and we're not different from other shelters. I just, you know, Canmore has a reputation of having more dogs than kids, but I think it has even more cats than dogs. So, what's our vision? Our vision is really to make a difference in the lives of the dogs and cats that are abandoned, and the families that adopt them. So, a lot of our work is trying to change the lives for the better. Well, it's pretty obvious that if a dog is a stray dog, or an abandoned dog, or an injured dog that nobody's willing to take care of, that if we take care of them, their lives are going to change for the better. That's not so unapparent. What I think is unapparent is how much the volunteers and the staff, and the new owners, when they adopt the dog, and the community itself benefits from this. So, if you ever ask anybody who's a dog owner, you know, who else ever greets you every time you come through the door? They're not likely to say their spouse. They're more than likely going to say if they've got a dog, it's the dog. So, and the cats, as Ed will tell you who's a cat person, cats do the same thing. So, you know, it changes our lives, the owners, and it changes the lives of the volunteers and the staff. You, we have, just as a quick example, we have a dog that came to us with 11 broken teeth, three breaks in his hind legs, mange, the human, the dog equivalent of Lyme's disease, and a curable form of cancer. Right? And over, well, he came in February, he's still with us. So, if you ask anybody who worked with that dog, took him to Calgary for weekly cancer treatments, worked with him on the behavior stuff, worked with him on getting his teeth pulled, helped cure, medicate him, they will tell you their lives changed. He changed our lives as much as we changed his. Because that whole bonding kind of thing, and the care, and, and the feelings that come from it, and, and the self-esteem, all of that is there. So, I guess if you were trying to look at a summary, you could say, adopt, love. I mean, that's part of what we, we think we're doing. Our mission, this is in our bylaws and our website, is to provide the community with a no-kill, no-cage adoption center, promote humane attitudes and responsible pet companionship, and educational programs. One of the things that's interesting is every now and then we meet, when we have an open house or something, we'll meet a, an adult who's there with their kids, and they'll say, yeah, the kids explained all of this to me because we were out and visited their class, and they learned about all this kind of stuff. So, the kids become propagandists, I guess, for us in many cases. So, just as a quick summary, the funds that are provided to us are applied to our salaries, wages, and veterinary costs. And in 2017, our overall budget was $331,000. So, of that, if you do the '78 and '18, you can see that 96% of our costs are basically operational. So, only about 4% are devoted to anything else that would be involved with it, which in some cases is running some events and that kind of thing. Adoption and surrender fees, a lot of people think, well, you get an animal in, you charge people for taking the animal, and they, when they, you give them to, when we get them, and you charge people an adoption fee, doesn't that cover it? Well, yeah, it covers about 12% of our expenses. So, what do you get when you get a dog that's adopted, or a cat that's adopted from us? They're spayed and neutered, they've had all their shots, all their vaccines, and any medical problems have been taken care of. So, that fee is almost always eaten up. Simply, this is not housing, or food, or care, or anything else, it's just eaten up by the, the stuff that we do, because we know that we want to have healthy animals out in the environment. So, what's the impact been? I don't think I'll go through everything here, but I think you can see that a lot of our effort, because we're located here in Canmore, of course, a lot of Canmore residents are involved with us, but we work a lot with bylaw, and we now take all of the animals that bylaw captures, and we house them for the three-day waiting period. And those animals come to us continually and consistently. You can see that 14 and 16, so it isn't that we get tons and tons of animals, but it is a place that bylaw has, that they don't have to worry about managing, as Greg used to say, you know, really, we would like our bylaw officers to be doing other things than cleaning dog kennels. And I think he had a point. We also offer a free or low-cost spay-neuter program for low-income families. So, one of the problems that almost every community has is if you have dogs that are running loose in, in the community, or cats, they tend to breed. So, people who can't afford to spay and neuter their dogs often eventually will lose track of the dog, dog wants to run away, whatever. So, we offer this low cost, and no cost in some cases, for people who can qualify as low-income people. We've got lots of support in the community in terms of businesses, and Canmore residents are some of our biggest donors, and account for almost half of the donations that get made, which is that other minus the 12% that, that we get from surrender fees, a lot of that money comes from donations as well as grants. Presentations, over 100 grade-student students. We also go to high school. We've been working a lot with seniors, which is really quite a interesting experience. We worked a lot with seniors with dementia, and the day that we would arrive, we were going there once a week with two dogs, and when with the day we would arrive, you'd just see people kind of light up. Not only the people with dementia, but the staff, which was really interesting for us, because I think it gave them a little bit of a break, as well as a dog to pet. And you could just see the, I mean, people who had dogs, there were some, some people, some seniors who said, I really don't want to, but the ones that had dogs as kids or as adults, they were just like, you know, it was like, oh, let me pet that dog. We also started, and maybe you don't really, I didn't realize this, but there's a reading program where kids are having trouble reading. If you have a dog in the room for them to read out loud to, their reading improves remarkably better than almost any other thing you can do. And this has been proven over and over again, other places, so we tried it this year, and it worked. I guess we work a lot with a hospital, and we do puppy socialization, dog obedience. The one thing I'll say about puppy socialization and the kids is we're working on the preventative strategy. Don.
Thank you.
See, it didn't really help that much, but it.
Thank you, Mr. Potts, for your presentation. Are there any questions from, Counselor McCollum?
So, we didn't actually get the report.
Oh, you didn't?
No. So, if you don't mind perhaps sending a copy of that report to Ms. Hyde after the meeting, then we can have a copy of that.
Send it to, um, Catherine. Rick should have found that.
Ms. Hyde is your contact.
Okay, I'll send it to you. Okay, sorry.
No, that's all right, because I would love to read it, just so that you know we didn't get it, and we will read it after the fact.
Okay, fine, no problem.
Any notes? Nope.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Moving on to item C, which is approval of the minutes of the August 14th, 2018 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Looking to administration and fellow members, any errors or omissions? See none. I will move that we accept the minutes of the August 14th, 2018 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Those in favor? Opposed? I see none. Move that we accept the minutes unanimously. Moving on to item D. First up is Bow Valley Early Childhood Coalition, presented by Ms. Brown.
Oh, actually, it's going to be Ellen Theringer. I'm just setting him up.
Oh, sorry.
Patricia DeBoer.
Yay. Thank you. Am I getting time? Yay. Thank you. Am I getting time? No. Oh, good, I can relax. Good afternoon. My name's Ellen Theringer, and I'm, you know me as the supervisor of Bow Valley Parent Link. But today, I'm here as an active member of the Bow Valley ECD Coalition, and would like to introduce my colleague Patricia DeBoer, who is the Coalition's Coordinator. Today, we're here to present our latest early development instrument data. This data was collected in February 2016, and what it's going to do is give you all a snapshot of how our children are doing in the Bow Valley. So, in the late 1990s, the Premier of Ontario commissioned the Early Years Study by Fraser Mustard and Margaret McCain. This study reviewed the evidence and practical recommendations on how to use new knowledge about early brain development to benefit all children. One of the Early Years Studies' recommendations was to introduce, in consultation with communities, a readiness-to-learn measure for children entering school that provides information at the community level on how well children are doing. As a result, the Early Development Instrument, or what we call the EDI, was developed by Dr. Dan Offord and Dr. Magdalena Janis of the, at the Offord Center of McMaster University. Fast forward to today, the Alberta EDI Program operates within Alberta, within a three-year cycle, with one year dedicated to data collection, and years in between, a collection used for analysis of the data, development of community and provincial reports, and planning for responding to it. Although Alberta completed the province-wide collection of EDI data in February and March 2016, the process for that collection began much earlier, and continued well after the data is collected. And of note, there is a tri-ministry partnership at the provincial level that involves Alberta Community and Social Services, Alberta Education, and Alberta Health that's involved in the EDI data collection. The Early Development Instrument measures five areas, or what we call domains, of early childhood development. It's a 103-item questionnaire completed by kindergarten teachers in the second half of the school year, so they spend September to January getting to know the children in their classrooms, and then the data is collected in January and February. And it measures children's abilities to meet age-appropriate developmental expectations in these five general domains. And Patricia, when she's up, she'll provide a bit more detail on this shortly, but just to go through them, physical health and well-being, social competence, emotional maturity, language and cognitive development, and communication and general knowledge. For each of the five EDI developmental domains, children receive a score between 0 and 10, where 0 is most development, is most developmentally vulnerable. The average EDI scores for each developmental area are divided into categories representing the highest scores to the lowest scores in the community. So, how we'll present it is the green, which is children developing on track, the yellow or orange, children scoring at risk, and then the red is groups of children who score below the 10th profile, or who are deemed vulnerable. So, as I mentioned, the EDI provides a snapshot, or a picture in time, of the development of young children in our community. Knowing how many children were collected on, how many children were eligible, and how many schools participated, tell us how focused that picture is. Other community data can also provide us with context to further explore and to begin to uncover the why. And just to let you know, there were 206 eligible children that came from both Banff Elementary School and Elizabeth Rummel School. Exha School participated, however, their data was included in the Cochrane Community Our Lady of the Snows and Notre Dame Desmonds did not participate in the 2016 EDI survey. And as you can see, the collection rate was 79%. So, that means that, as you see on the slide, five EDI were attributed to special needs students, so they were not included. And then 38 did not meet the criteria. So, there was either missing data, or the child was in the classroom for too short a time for the, the teacher to really be able to provide valid information. So, that left 163 valid EDIs on which this data is being presented. So, I'm just going to hand it over to Patricia now, and she'll take us through our Bow Valley 2016 results in more detail.
Hello. So, the first area that we were going to look at is the physical health and well-being. These are looking for, at the children at their gross and fine motor skills, they're looking at the energy levels for activities, independence, and looking after one own's needs, and daily living skills. So, things such as going to the washroom independently, as you can see, holding a crayon, and being able to take care of themselves by dressing and feeding themselves. Now, the results for the area in the Bow Valley, for the physical, physical health and well-being are, the Bow Valley, we have 82% of the children that were surveyed are on track, and then we have 18% of the children that are at risk or vulnerable. Now, comparison with Alberta, are on track, we're doing pretty good, but we are always aware of that we still have 18% of the children that are at risk and vulnerable. Our next domain that we're looking at is the social competence. And this domain looks at the child's curiosity, their eagerness to try new experiences, ability to own behavior, respect, cooperation, following rules, and ability to play and work with other children. And I think that pretty much says it all in there. And if we move to the results, the social competence within the Bow Valley, we're looking at 79% of the children are on track, and we have 22% that are at risk and vulnerable. Again, in comparison with Alberta, we're doing fairly similar to what, what they have on the whole. Moving along, we'll move to emotional maturity. Emotional maturity looks at the child as almost never having, showing aggression, or anxiousness, or impulsive behavior. Children have, will tend to have really good concentration, and will also help other This one too, they're looking a lot at, is the children too fearful, are they too impulsive? Are they able to deal with their age-appropriate behaviors? Are they focused, and are they able to separate from their parents as they're attending school? If we look at the Bow Valley results for the emotional maturity, this is the one that does cause us a little concern, and, and shows that we have 69% of the children within the Bow Valley that have done the surveys are on track, 31% are at risk and vulnerable. In comparison, again, as you can see with Alberta, this is one that we definitely would like to look a little bit more into as to the why. Moving to our next domain, it's the language and cognitive development. This focuses on the early writing skills, the ready awareness, the age-appropriate literacy, and numeracy skills, and ability to understand the similarities and differences, and also the memory of the child. Looking at the basic stuff, 10 letters of alphabet, interested in reading, able to count, and looking at their ability to be able to write their own name. The language and cognitive development results within the Bow Valley are 87% of the children that were surveyed are on track, and again, about 13% are at risk and are vulnerable. Within our Bow Valley, as you can see, that's a stronger domain that we find. And moving on to our last one is the communication skills and general knowledge. These are skills to communicate needs and wants in a socially appropriate way, symbolic use of language, storytelling, and age-appropriate knowledge of the world around them, is what these questions will be looking at, and when they're looking at the child. In the Bow Valley, the communication skills and general knowledge are, 77% are on track, 23% are at risk and vulnerable. Now, after looking at all five areas, we can take a look at all of them together, and just to recap, nearly a third, so 31% of the Bow Valley children are at risk or vulnerable in the emotional maturity. And nearly a quarter, so 22 to 23% of Bow Valley's children are at risk or vulnerable in the social competence and communication skills and general knowledge. No worries. And with this, I'll let you think about that for a minute, and Ellen will continue the
So, what we know is communities have a strong influence on children's development in the early years. Studies show that children tend to do better in supportive and connected communities that provide families with access to high-quality supports and services. Supportive community environments can help offset the effects of poverty, toxic stress, and other risk, risk factors that negatively influence development. Children are born and raised in environments that include their families, community, and broader society. The quality of this environment, of these environments influences early development, and has a lifelong impact on everything from health to success at school and work, behavior, relationships, and an overall sense of well-being. Communities are an essential part of the context in which children grow and develop. So, based on the current Bow Valley data, and the, in collaboration with the strong network of Alberta coalitions, by the way, there are over approximately 100 coalitions across Alberta working on this, as well as the tri-ministry partnership at provincial level, we are well-positioned, the coalition is, and all its members, and our sails are set. The coalition is inspired to continue this important work in partnership with all of our community members. What we need from you is your continued support and investment as our community leaders, and we, one of the things that we wanted to do today was to invite each of you to participate in the upcoming Early Childhood Summit that is going to be taking place here at the Canmore Nordic Center on October 27th, 7th, in 2018. As decision-makers, your input, along with our many other committed community members, will be crucial to helping to chart the path forward. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you both for your presentation. Now, I'll open the floor to anyone who has any questions. Counselor Comper?
Thank you, Chair Mara. Thank you for your work in this domain. As a former school board trustee, I think I worked with you off and on over time in developing and getting the EDI going in the valley, and it's a very, it's a, it's a great instrument for the assessment of kids and getting them off to a good start. I know when we were studying it and learning about it, that one of the interesting things is the return on investment on, into early childhood development beats anything you can get on a savings account, and certainly most stocks and bonds. It's, I think, currently 13%. So, it's money well spent, and I applaud you in your efforts. Thank you.
Thanks, Esme. Counselor McCollum?
Your worship. Thank you for your presentation, ladies. I just had, was curious, is there a reason why OLS and Notre Dame Desmonds was not interested in participating? And if they had participated, how many children would we be looking at that would have been added to this?
Very good questions. I, I'm not sure why they didn't participate. I know that the decision to participate or not is not left with individual schools, it's, it's up to the school divisions, and they're part of bigger school divisions.
Of course, yeah.
So, I, I don't actually know why they didn't participate, and I don't know the number of kids.
Or of kids.
Kids, but I could certainly find that out.
That'd be great.
And, and we, we would be interested. And we would be interested in the future in having them participate, and we're certainly inviting them to the Early Childhood Summit.
It might be something that, for the next time you do these studies, that you might want to present to the parent councils, because they might be able to poke the...
That's a good idea.
Because the school boards for those organizations are out of town.
Elsewhere.
So maybe they don't understand the importance of it, and I think it's quite important to get a full picture. But thank you very much.
Thanks.
Can I add to that as well? I just wanted to add that at the summit, that's hopefully one of our goals, too, is to encourage more participation. And again, as Ellen had mentioned about Exash School, we're hoping that we can make sure that those postal codes are a part of our study as well. So at the summit, this is hopefully the great work that we'll be getting into, and that's what we're excited about, so.
Thanks, ladies.
Thank you. Moving on to D2, Draft Climate Action Plan, presented by Ms. Rizling-Winn.
Good afternoon, Deputy Mayor and members of council. I am here today to share with you the Draft Climate Action Plan. So my intent today, this afternoon, is to share the Draft Climate Action Plan, which you had in your council agenda package, for your consideration and to solicit some of your feedback and answer some of your questions. So what's in the plan? So the plan essentially has three main sections. The first section is our updated inventory, which describes the emissions for the community. The second piece is the targets and the proposed targets that are included in the update. The third piece, of course, are the climate actions, so how do we intend to meet those targets? And this is all done for both the community and for the corporation of the Town of Canmore, so it's broken out for community level and also taking a bit of a deeper dive into what's happening specifically with the Town of Canmore itself. So just a little bit of history before I jump into the plan. In two thousand and ten, the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan did set targets and identified a number of actions. And then in two thousand and thirteen, the ESAP was updated, but not the details of the climate action, so it was really more of an administrative review at that time. And then in two thousand and fifteen, the Town of Canmore committed to the Global Covenant of Mayors. And so that's really a four-phase exercise, and a number of cities across the globe are participating in the Compact of Mayors or the Global Covenant of Mayors. And so it requires communities to first make that commitment, which we've done, and then to update our inventory, which was this exercise, set new targets, and then identify an action plan. So this work that we've done was a great opportunity to refresh what we had previously done in two thousand and ten. And it also, to point out that in redoing and refreshing our inventory at this time, it gave us an opportunity to bring a level of rigor for doing emissions accounting for the town, and it also reflects a trend towards increasing standardization of emissions reporting. So we're now using a global protocol to report our emissions, and it's standardized for other communities, so it was an opportunity for us to do that. And you will have noted that we've increased the scope. So in the past, we really just looked at energy from electricity and natural gas, and we've now included emissions both from transportation and waste sectors. And it's a direct result of what is required in terms of participating in the Global Covenant of Mayors. So the inventory section, of course, it does, it articulates our emissions, and it's done, again, both for the corporation and for the community. And the protocol also allows us to separate it into sectors. So you'll note that it describes emissions related to buildings, it describes emissions related to transportation, and then emissions related to waste. And we set the baseline year of two thousand and fifteen. So this is a look at what our emissions profile for two thousand and fifteen for the community looked at, looked like. So you'll note that fifty-four percent of the emissions from the community are from our built environment, so from our buildings, followed by about forty percent of our emissions from transportation. And the last bit of emissions is related to our municipal solid waste and our biosolids from the wastewater treatment plant. I'm stuck. So here's what it looks like, represented as percentages. And I do understand that you had some questions about how this relates to previous inventories. And so, again, a reminder that it didn't include the full scope of the emissions that we looked at in two thousand and fifteen. So this is previous inventory data just for energy related to electricity and natural gas. So you can see for two thousand and fourteen, the emissions were around one hundred and seventy thousand tons. And then in two thousand and fifteen, they came in at about one hundred and fifty thousand tons. So it's a little bit, little bit less, not really statistically significant, about twenty thousand tons less. So we're still sort of in that, the profile of the last four years has been quite similar and quite consistent. So just a reminder that our two thousand and fifteen target was to stabilize emissions. This is from the two thousand and ten ESAP. Our two thousand and twenty target was to reduce emissions from two thousand and seven by twenty, or sorry, fifty percent. And then the two thousand and fifty target was to reduce emissions by eighty percent from those two hundred and seven, or two thousand and seven values. So this chart describes our corporate emissions, so just looking at the Town of Canmore facilities. And you can see that our built environment, again, our buildings really represent the bulk of our emissions, followed by our lights, so streetlights and traffic lights, the energy consumed by the wastewater treatment plant, and then our transportation and our fleet. So of the entire community total, our corporate emissions account for about two-point-five percent of that, so a fairly small proportion. And there it is, represented as a percentage. And I thought it might be interesting for you just to see sort of how our facilities play out in terms of its, in terms of their energy consumption. So this chart demonstrates, you know, where our largest facilities are consuming the most amount of energy. So elevation place being the facility that does consume the most amount of energy. This is in gigajoules, so this is electricity and natural gas together, but not rolled into GHG emissions, but the profile would be similar, of course. The Canmore Rec Center coming in second, and then the wastewater treatment plant, which also consumes a fair amount of energy, and then followed by all of our other municipal facilities. So the next section describes the targets that we're proposing to be set, again, for the community and for the corporation. And the targets are grounded in the federal and provincial actions that have been taken recently related to climate change, and also looking at other communities around the world in North America and Canada that have been leaders in terms of setting targets. And the targets are described as sort of big-picture targets, and then there are a number of specific targets related to high-priority activities, and I'm just going to focus on the big-picture target for my presentation. So simplified graphic of our emissions, this is two thousand and fifteen. So by two thousand and thirty, we'd like to set a target of a thirty percent reduction in emissions for the community, and then by two thousand and fifty, it would, or sorry, by two thousand and thirty, a fifty percent reduction for the corporation. And that's recognizing that we have a bit more ability to influence our own facilities, so we've set a higher target for ourselves. And then by two thousand and fifty, eighty percent reduction both for the corporation and for the community. And then there's an additional piece that wasn't included in the two thousand and ten ESAP, and this is the piece regarding a renewable or low-energy target. So we've left a placemaker in the action plan regarding that. We haven't set a target, because there's a fair amount of work that needs to go into target setting for renewables or low-carbon. So we need to dive a bit deeper in that, but we did want to put a placeholder in the action plan to give ourselves the ability to move forward in doing that work. So the final section is, of course, the actions. So how do we propose to get to those targets? And it's certainly not an exhaustive list, and it represents, you know, some of the best ideas that were put forward at this time, but it will need to be refreshed in the future, and it also gives us the flexibility to add things that hadn't been contemplated and make it into the document as well. And they are identified according to sectors. So there's actions related to buildings, there are actions related to transportation, there's actions related to waste, and then the renewable low-carbon piece. So I'm just going to give you a bit of a highlight from each of those sectors. I'm certainly not going to go through all of them. So just to give you an example of what's in there. So under buildings, and so this includes existing and new buildings, things like establishing an energy benchmarking program, so this would allow annual disclosure of energy use between buildings. We know that social norms are a really strong thing that influences behavior, and so if building managers and building owners can have a look and see how they perform relative to their associates, it can be a really strong motivator. So an energy benchmarking program. We've already talked about PACE here at council, so this just acknowledges that those types of financial instruments can be available for communities and that we should continue to consider them. For our own municipal facilities, doing things like energy audits and building recommissioning on a, on a, on a, on a set basis, so that, you know, we're continually on top of our building's energy performance, and we know how we can improve it. And then things like encouraging the development of green subdivisions, so working with developers to think about things like district energy in new subdivisions, things like building passive solar design, building EV and PV-ready, so thinking about these things as our new subdivisions are being developed. Some of the actions related to transportation and our engineering department has been doing an amazing job of already implementing many of, many of the things that would have been suggested, but continuing to invest in our infrastructure and upgrades that promote mode shift and different modes of active transportation, bike lanes, multi-use trails, pedestrian-only streets. Considering the build-out of EV infrastructure throughout the community, we're seeing more and more uptake in terms of electric vehicles. How do we make it accessible to our own residents, but the traveling public as well? Doing things like retiring our less fuel-efficient vehicles. So again, keeping an eye on our own infrastructure and our own fleet and ensuring that we're making really good choices about how we're using our own energy. And then also allocating budget for snow removal on bike commuter trails. So, you know, we have lots of people that really are committed to cycling and commuting by bike, but it's a barrier in the wintertime if our commuter paths are snow and ice-covered. So with respect to waste, of course, the big one would be introducing an organics collection program, and we have, you know, great plans in the upcoming next couple of years to actually do that, so that'll make a really big stride in the right direction in terms of reducing our waste, GHGs related to waste. Reducing construction demolition and renovation waste is another big piece. Also considering waste-to-energy projects within the community, we're starting to look at opportunities, again, related to organics and our biosolids, but, you know, maybe we can look bigger picture and see what can happen in new subdivisions as well. And then food waste is a big piece. I mean, recycling our organics is one part of the solution, but how do we reduce the actual amount of organic waste that the community is producing in the first place so we can do maybe additional effort in that regard? And then the last set of actions is, of course, related to our renewable low-carbon energy target setting, so we do need to think about what that's going to look like. We also want to consider the feasibility of collaborating on projects with neighboring jurisdictions and First Nations. So let's not just look at the footprint of the Town of Canmore, but what could we possibly do up and down the valley to think about renewable and low-carbon energy sources? And the other piece is also our renewable energy certificates. So I forgot to mention this when I was talking about our corporate emissions, but up until the end of two thousand and seventeen, we were purchasing the equivalent of a hundred percent of our energy consumption in renewable energy certificates. So including two thousand and fifteen, that was the case at that time. However, in two thousand and eighteen and beyond, we haven't been purchasing recs for our corporate energy consumption, but perhaps it's something we do need to think about and maybe even building it out for the community, and we would want to establish some guidelines around that. So the last part of the plan, of course, talks about, okay, we've got this great plan, what are we going to do with it? So, of course, we need to act. So a lot of the actions in there, we can mainstream, and we can certainly incorporate with our existing operations and retrofits, but some of it is going to need to have a deeper dive, so specific budgets and funding sources, looking at things as milestones and timelines for these, for these more complex projects and things that may even require a technical analysis. So we'll be bringing those pieces back to you, of course. And then reviewing and updating the plan. It's not static, it's one snapshot in time. We renew plans fairly regularly, so this would be no different. We would want to do that as well. And then we certainly want to understand how we're doing and track and report on our progress, so we want to make sure that we're doing ongoing monitoring. So this is just a really simplified graphic of how, you know, we could do that, we could track what's been completed, what's in progress. It doesn't have to look exactly like this, but this is an example of what it could look like, but certainly that piece is obviously really important. We, we're doing this for a reason, we want to see how much progress we're making. So that's it. So I'm happy to answer any questions, receive your feedback, and hopefully bring it back to you again in a couple of weeks' time.
Thank you, Ms. Rizling, for a very thorough report. Is there any questions from anyone? Counselor Sealy?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Mara. Great report, a lot of really good information in here. It looks like the targets are very aggressive, and they're intentionally so. It's important work. How do we ensure that we're getting there and everything's reasonable? I know there's checks along the way and everything else, but how do we take a first look and make sure that it's reasonable over time and might have to make some adjustments?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, so the other piece that I should have mentioned, and I meant to amend the staff report to reflect this as well, but the ERK Committee had a look at the draft document and did participate in the process to develop the plan, as did our internal staff. So it does have all staff, all staff did, all staff from each department had an opportunity to look at it, or key staff, I should say. And so I think that's a really important piece to acknowledge, is that we all have a hand in ensuring the implementation of this and working into our budget process as well, and bringing realistic projects forward that are both technically feasible and financially sound. And I think if we plug away at it in that way, then we can ensure that we are both making progress and sort of determining whether or not those targets are still realistic. And they are aspirational. I mean, there are targets, there are, there's two philosophies to target setting. There's the top-down approach or the bottom-up, and this is a bit of a marrying of both. So there are some more specific targets in there that are really intended for us to track our progress in a more defined way. And then the aspirational targets are those, you know, further out ones, the two thousand and thirty, the two thousand and fifty. But, and they do align with what other communities are doing, but it's a totally fair question. I think we need to be purposeful, we need to be implementing it with intent, and each of our departments needs to be looking at it during the budgeting process to see what is it that we can, we can now do for the next year, two years out.
Thank you.
Sorry, if I just might add to that. Obviously, a number of initiatives will come forward as part of the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty budget and business planning, and they will come with identified projects with actual costs associated with it, and then ultimately, they will be decisions of council, to what extent to prioritize and to fund those initiatives. So the short answer is, how do we ensure that it happens? We will need to fund the work.
Counselor McCollum? Counselor McCollum?
Thank you, your worship. Thank you for your presentation. I was wondering if you could tell me if any of the actions that you have in place are reliant on participation or cooperation from other levels or other orders of government? So currently, like, we have our solar incentive program, and we have our solar incentive program, and then the province has, is investing in solar. If that were to go away, do we have any programming that's, or any plans that's reliant on other orders of government to participate?
Not really, no. I would say, you know, ours are independent-
Yeah.
... from what would happen at either the provincial or federal government level. You know, the initiatives that the province has rolled out over the last two years certainly have helped to accelerate things, and we're really hopeful that that will continue. You know, I think some of the ties are more directly related to FCM funding and funding that's available through the province for these types of initiatives that we may or may not get in the future, but nothing specifically in here is tied to funding or participation from other levels of government.
Cool. Then I have a second question, which is touches on some of the things on your report when we talk about waste, and I'm just wondering if you're seeing any trends at all that are forcing manufacturers, whether it be food or otherwise, to reduce what they present their product to us to be? So for instance, I can go and, and in my mind, I'm thinking, oh, well, I'm actually using a bit less packaging, but what happens if I could have no packaging when I go and buy my chicken? Instead of the styrofoam that I'm forced to accept and forced to put in the landfill?
Yeah.
Is there any trends that you're seeing, or any ways that businesses are being pressured to respond to that need from the public, and in turn, that need because it's actually being downloaded to us as a cost?
Yeah. So there was some, it's called Enhanced Producer Responsibility, is really the program that-
It's called, sorry?
Enhanced Producer Responsibility. And the province was looking at some regulations around EPR a couple of years ago, but it sort of fell off their agenda, and I know that AUMA had been participating in some of that as well, and bringing that municipal voice to the conversation, saying, yeah, our municipal recycling programs and our waste programs are having to deal with this stuff that comes from you guys, what are you going to do about it? And so the last I heard is that AUMA was really encouraging municipalities to talk to the province directly about reviving that program and bringing a discussion about those regulations back. So I think it kind of got, did get put on, put on the side of the desk, so to speak, but-
Have you seen anything more grassrootsy, though, that involves communities dialoguing with their local grocery stores or stores in general, based on things that are produced or sold there? Have you seen anything like that?
Right. No, no, I, no, I haven't. I mean, the first thing that pops to mind was the newspapers, unsolicited newspapers in Banff, and then there was some pushback from the newspaper industry about, I think they were going to try and pass a bylaw that said you can't drop unsolicited newspapers at the doorstep.
Right.
So Banff had done some work in that regard, but I haven't heard anything else.
Gotcha. Thanks very much.
Counselor Hillstead?
Thank you for your presentation.